I'm calling the meeting of the Personnel Subcommittee and Committee of a Whole Meeting, August 5th, 6:30, pursuant to Governor Baker's Executive Order acting pursuant to the powers provided by Chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950 in Section 2A of Chapter 17, the Massachusetts General Laws, the meeting chambers will be closed to the public. However, the meeting will be made available to the public by adequate alternative means, that being联 community television and/or a video conferencing recording. On the agenda, we have a job.
I'm in. Yeah, I'm in. Yep. Has he started to talk? Anything serious?
Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction for Professional Learning and Practice. It's a draft job posting. Did anybody have anything to say? Dr. Tatwiler?
Yeah, yeah. So just quickly, you know, we've learned a lot about ourselves since March, since the closure. Some of it has been really good in terms of learning how to be more efficient. But we've also uncovered a number of areas that we, you know, on which we need a lot of support. A significant piece of our, and as we look ahead to the fall, significant piece of our reopening planning involves professional learning. The scope of the new information that must be understood and woven into practice is vast in topic and deep in nature. The new learning is not limited to simply understanding information, strategies, protocols. We're really talking about shifting mindsets around teaching and learning to more effectively service the learning needs of our students. What is more, we need to design and facilitate learning for parents and guardians, given the increased reality of at-home learning. At present, there's no one individual whose exclusive responsibility it is to provide that important contribution. Many of the activities are designed in siloed fashion or in various places in our organization and/or provided by a consultant at a cost. We're proposing this position, of course, dependent on budget availability for those reasons and more. This position will support and expand the district's ability to develop professional development and learning and assess those needs on an ongoing basis. We know, and we've talked about this a number of times, the number of things that staff will need to become familiar with and skill that for this fall, learning management system, blended learning.
So sorry.
If everybody could mute, that would be helpful. And Deb, you can actually mute them as a co-host as well.
We also aren't, we also aren't recording. We should be recording this right now.
Got it.
Could you start? You, I'm sorry to say, if anybody wants to start there from the top, if we haven't had it recorded.
Excuse me. Let me reach out to Dawn Hussey, and I believe I was supposed to do a roll call.
Do over.
Start from the top.
Hi.
Are we being recorded?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It'll be times two. Do you want to do a roll call, Mary?
Yes. Ms. Capola? Ms. Capola?
You. Take off your mute.
I'm not muted.
No, Dawn is, they muted everybody.
Somebody muted me. Okay. Ms. Capola?
Present.
Ms. Gately?
Present.
Mr. Sadoway?
Present.
Observing, Mr. Castellanos. Mr. Ford. Mr. Nicholson. Mayor McGee. Okay, Dawn. Okay, Dr. Tatwiler, you want to go on? I don't know if you want to start from the beginning, if.
No, what?
Okay.
I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you the abridged version. There are significant professional development needs as we look ahead to preparing for the fall and beyond. We don't have any one position whose exclusive responsibility it is to design, facilitate, and assess needs around professional development. We're proposing a position depending on budget availability of a person or a position that would do just that. We see this as fulfilling a critical gap in our organization, and we also see it as a cost saver. We typically, you know, will hire consultants to do this work for us, and we really feel like that needs to be in-house and, you know, more attuned to the reality of the needs in Lynn instead of bringing someone in consistently to do this work for us. And so I've provided you with a rationale and a scope of potential posting of the position. I'm happy to hear your feedback on the contents of the posting or on the posting on the position as a whole. But if you, you know, accept this proposal, I would then schedule a meeting with the Lynn School Administrators Association to finalize the posting. And once we get to the budget and once we've been proposed a budget timeline by the state, we would discuss whether or not this was a position that could fit in that budget.
Is there anybody that wants to speak in?
Yes, Dawn.
Any questions? Michael? Yeah, Michael.
So Patrick, I have some concerns with the, with the position. You know, we got 44 pages of curriculum jobs that are central, and if you look at the responsibilities, it looks like these subjects that they're responsible for, one of their responsibilities is to develop in professional development. And I would assume that they would have the expertise in that area if they got that position. In addition to that, I'm looking at the Executive Director of Curriculum's position, which the posting from 2018, it says facilitation of district teams to create and monitor the district professional development plan. Do we have a district professional development plan that doesn't include hiring outside entities?
So in my, in my first rendition of talking about the rationale for this position, I talked about the professional development, design and facilitation being siloed, meaning there are individuals in pockets who do this work, but no coordination of it for district-wide. The assessment is not done from the balcony, so to speak. It's done in a siloed fashion. And as we thought about the needs that, around professional development, looking ahead to the fall, this was a place where frankly, we didn't have anywhere to turn. There's not a position that exists in the district that does this. And frankly, as we look at other districts, there, there's typically a person whose exclusive responsibility it is to design and facilitate professional development.
This seems like.
While that may be, I mean, that's also in a principal posting, right? That's also on a principal's responsibility to design professional development. We're talking about a more district-wide approach to assessing the needs district-wide. We're talking about a person who's trained in the development, trained in the processes of designing and facilitating professional development. This is a little bit of a more unique situation than, I know that that responsibility lives in a lot of postings, but we're talking about a different approach here and one that frankly, we don't have.
Well, so when I got this, I, I, I thought, you know, this is what we've been pushing for getting a person to do grants because there are so many people that have that responsibility in their job posting, and we don't have a central person for this position. And we could, who knows what that could do for the district, okay? But we still rely on the different pockets of people to pursue those grants, okay? So what are we going to do with this huge responsibility that lies within the curriculum department and each person in charge of that key demographic of a subject that they're handling? You know, this should be a huge part of their job already, and we're going to take it away? And what's going to replace it?
No, no. So, so this would be a partner position, right? Those, those positions that you just described, that's one, professional development is one of 25 other responsibilities, right? Now they'll have a thought partner, an expert, a professional who they can partner with to design and develop and facilitate the professional development.
And where, where, where does this lie in? So we're talking about professional development and learning, and yet in your rationale, you, you talk about them also facilitating learning for parents and guardians. Why wouldn't that fall within the family information center? Why wouldn't we have them, you know, involved with that as well? Because they're the ones with the immediate contact with families.
So historically, and to this day, the parent information centers, that operation has simply been around registration. It has not gone beyond that. I mean, I think that's a place for us to get to, but, but it's not where we are now, and it's, to my knowledge, it's not where we've ever been with respect to that operation. Even still, even if you had, you know, grew that operation to, the focus of that operation to include, you know, trainings for parents, you would still need an expert to help you develop, assess needs, and maybe even facilitate that professional development. And I also say, you know, the kinds of things that I was, was referring to in the document, in the rationale about parent and guardian learning, i- is not necessarily the kinds of things that the parent information center would, would be responsible for. This is more about, you know, supporting learning for your child at home. It might be, you know, things around supporting or helping to meet the social emotional needs for your child at home. I, I don't necessarily see that as being the parent information center responsibility, but when you have an individual who has a district-wide responsibility for partnering with different departments or content area leads around developing professional learning, I just think it's going to be much more robust. Right now, it is super siloed, and, you know, in an area where frankly, I'm saying we have a need right now.
Okay. And it just, I think that if we had more interactions and more involvement and maybe more updates from the curriculum department, would we understand this need? Obviously, this is something that came out of the blue, to be honest with you. So, you know, we, we don't see Eva often, obviously, as much as we saw Deb when she was in that position. So I just, I look at her position, and I see a lot of this mirror in what she's responsible for. And it just, $92,000, $93,000, let's give that to the people that handle the interactions with the students directly. Let's give them the tools and whatnot that they need.
Can I, can I, can I just, so keep in mind that Kim Powers oversees the curriculum department and is at every meeting, and is probably, you know, brings to bear on any conversation that we're having at the school committee level, any curriculum matters that you would want to discuss. We don't necessarily, I mean, we could have Eva come, but Kim represents that, that thinking and that, what's going on in that department. The other thing that I would say is, you know, we have to think about capacity. I agree with you. We have needs in terms of direct service, which is why I specifically framed this as budget-dependent. We, you know, I'm, I'm telling you now that we have this need. We don't know what our budget is going to look like just yet. When we get it, and you would still need to approve it, if there was room, I would propose this position that's based on, on the need. And relative to the thought about it being out of the blue, yeah, it's out of the blue. COVID was out of the blue. And out of that experience, we came to know and realize needs that frankly, we maybe didn't see before. That is true.
Yeah. And again, if this is such a compelling and needed job, you know, I feel as though with, with this void, we've obviously been letting our, our professionals and students down by not having this central position if, if it's that dire. So I appreciate the rationale and, and obviously the answers you've given me. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Because I can't hear my voice.
I can hear you now. Do you want me to speak?
Yes, I am. Sorry. Yeah.
So Dr. Tatwiler, I, I got every assistant director's curriculum sent to me. I, I read over them. I studied them. I did my due diligence. And the Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Staff Quality and Development, that position seems to be most of this position you're putting forward. Now, I want to tell you one other thing that I have been listening to since I was teaching there, and that is that our, our curriculum department, they don't work in silos. They work as a team. We have brilliant assistant directors of curriculum. And I know that if they sat down and they put their brains together, they could come up with means to, you know, like, bridge any gap so that we don't have to go in and take more money and put it up to the top. We need somebody, the whole group of them, and it should be under the directorship of the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. I don't understand, do we now work in silos because, because we have a new executive director? But before with Kim, we worked as a group and a team. I'm all confused here.
Let me help you. So this, this position was talked about in close partnership with the Executive Director of Curriculum, with Kim Powers, who was the previous one, with Deb Regiro, who was the one who succeeded her. When I say that the professional development work is siloed, I don't, I, I think you misunderstood me. I'm not saying that the team does not work together. I'm saying the creation, the, the way that we're imagining professional development is in a siloed fashion. That team is very close and works very closely together, but on this particular issue, it is siloed. And I'd also say the position that you, that you referenced, that position frankly, should be in HR. Most of what that person does is around licensure. It is not around professional development. Eva was the one, the current Executive Director of Curriculum, used to serve in that role and would be the first person to tell you that almost none of that job is around the, around what I described for you and what I'm proposing in the new job. So, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying. Postings can be misleading. I mean, I just got a posting for a position that we're, that we're planning to post. It hasn't been updated in, in a long, long time, and it just doesn't reflect what is actually done in that position anymore. And so I hear you on, you know, if you look at it on paper, it might look a certain way, but that's not what that person does.
So if we move this person into personnel, then we might have some room to open up for another one, but I don't see it happening tonight. I just am really frustrated that being the chairperson in curriculum, I never heard anything about this position. No one came to me about this position. No one spoke to me about it. So it's like, I can't even make a recommendation of this position. So it's like weird that I didn't even know about it. It's a new position in curriculum, but I'm the chairperson of curriculum, and no one's even bothered to come to me, to talk to me and explain this position so I could explain it to my school committee members so that they can understand it, and then we could look into it more. So then we could send that posting to the personnel department, curriculum, I mean, personnel committee. I just am so confused. I did all my research. I looked through every single one of these assistant directors of curriculum position. And Mary can attain, attest to that because I've been on her back to get me all of them. So.
May I, may I just respond? Respectfully, I appreciate that you reviewed previous postings, but you didn't call me and ask me about the rationale. I don't see this, this posting, what we're proposing as a curriculum subcommittee issue. Curriculum Subcommittee typically deals with, you know, weighing options around textbook adoptions or new courses. This is a position, which is why we propose that it be discussed in the Personnel Subcommittee. I am always willing to talk to you about, you know, why I'm proposing a specific position. If you read through the postings and you're concerned or confused by why I'm proposing it, I welcome you to call me. Or I welcome you to call Eva, or welcome you to call Kim Powers or Deb Regiro. We're happy to explain it to you. I, I, you know, I respect where you're coming from. My job is to present to you things that I think we need, based on my assessment of what's going on here. I'm telling you this is what we need, but it's your job to support or not support it, and so it's, it's up to you.
Dawn, you're on mute. And Patrick, are we at the max? I have people texting me.
Yeah, that's why I was going to bring.
I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get Deb and Kevin back in. I've been multitasking here.
But are we, is there only 100 that can come in?
Only 100.
Okay.
I had a question.
Oh, did I mute it again? No.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, one of my first questions when I saw this was, understand this is, this is a big growth area for the district, especially in line of the circumstances. Also understand that there's a lot of changes in line of the circumstances that we need to make and additional expenditures we need to make. And so I'm definitely, I think it's a key question how this fits into the priorities of other expenditures. So I'm glad to cover that. I think, understand this will need time to getting this, but we wouldn't actually move forward until we were able to make that prioritization, go through that prioritization exercise in the budget process. The other question I had in, and this kind of goes along the conversation we're having about the postings being, being tailored to the position. My understanding of the rationale in the, in the document and also just sort of from, from what's going on is that there's a, there's a, there's a large need around the learning management system. There's a large need around the trauma-informed learning. And I think it would be helpful for that to be elevated in the, the posting. If, if we could find people who had experience in those subject areas, because when I looked at the qualifications, it just seemed like it was fairly generic in, you know, administrative experience, ability for professional development, and then, you know, best practices in pedagogy teaching learning. I think it might be useful for us to call out those, those specific experiences that I think we're looking for leadership on. Thank you, Mitch.
Can I, member Capola, can I, can Eva O'Malley speak to this really quickly?
Yes. That is. Hi. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say that the curriculum department has grown over the years. When I got there in 2010, we were about 10, we're up to, we're up to like 14. But everybody has a role. ELA math, the position that's the Assistant Director of Staff Development and Staff Quality, does a lot with new teachers, with the recruitment of it. And you know that we, we hire about 100 teachers a year. So the recruitment, the mentor induction, that position looks at and assesses or evaluates professional development that comes from the school, but it's actually creating it and making it in this new era where we're using a lot of blended learning, screencasts, bringing all of the newer technology pieces. There's really no time. Like, a math person or ELA person is creating PD, yes, but we're looking for this person to kind of be, like Dr. Tatwiler said, a thought partner to help them bump it up so that we can do more like blended learning or flip classrooms or something like. Ryan, did you want to?
Yeah, so I actually have a question around communication. So I have a lot, my communication line is blown up because they're saying that we're getting locked out of this meeting. So there's a lot of anxiety in my constituent base right now. So I don't know if we're allowed to go Facebook Live, but I know I, probably other members are probably seeing their phones going up, but there's people that want to join our meeting. I'm not sure, are we allowed to go Facebook Live?
Attorney Mahos, that's a question for him.
Attorney Mahos, are we allowed to go Facebook Live with this meeting, if it's public?
You're, you're mute, Attorney Mahos.
Thank you. There was no advertising such that notice to win out. Talks about the platform it's going to be on. So if you're going to change the platform, I don't think that's permissible.
I, I don't think we're changing it. I think we're adding a platform.
It would be, it would be adding a pla, and actually, I feel like.
It was just going to be an addition, then it's up to the chair to make a ruling relative to that, but I see it would not be violated with any, any statutes.
We're restricting the public from entering this meeting.
No, Brian, he's saying it's okay, but it's up to some to make.
So I guess the question is, is the chair of the committee, Dawn, do we want to, do we have the full committee here? But Dawn, did you want to address that? And then we're also obviously going into our full committee meeting once this meeting is over, related to what the question is on Facebook Live.
We're wondering if we can stream our, our screens right now so people can see what's being discussed, Dawn, and it's up to the chair to decide.
Okay. But I thought he was referring to the mayor as the chair.
You both can make the determination, and I'm fine with that.
All right.
I'm happy to make a motion to the, to the committee of the, to, to Dawn, I'm happy to make a motion as we're working on the subcommittee here to allow Facebook Live to be able to stream this out, understanding there is a limit of 100 people on the Zoom call, and there's more people that would like to be able to view this. So I'll make a motion to the subcommittee chair to.
Come on.
On, on allowing the, on allowing the subcommittee, and we can then address at the full committee meeting this, but that allow the subcommittee to Facebook Live, stream this so that people can follow the ongoing meeting. So there's a motion on the floor.
Second. I'm seconding it, Dawn.
Okay. Roll call then. Ms. Capola. Yes. Ms. Gately. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And I believe Eva just finished, Dawn, so I don't know if anyone has any additional questions for her.
I'm sorry, you're all breaking up, so I, I can't hear it, but.
Eva, were you done? Eva?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, were you done?
Can you hear me? Yeah, I mean, I just, just wanted to reiterate the fact that we definitely work as a team, but everyone has a lot of different positions, a lot of different tasks, a lot of different jobs, and this position would kind of actually.
of different jobs, and this position, um, would kind of actually help, um, not only, uh, the, the Assistant Directors, but also the principals and really try to make sure that we have some definite district goals and initiatives that when we do have our outside partners come in, we want to make sure that there's a consistent message that gets relayed, um, to, to us. So everybody's hearing the same, same message. Thank you.
Just one question, Eva and, and Patrick. So a- at what point did we figure out that the Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Staff Quality and Development didn't do what we needed them to do in that role? Um, and, and, and why did it take two years?
No, that, that role, um, has evolved as it goes. That role, um, really de- deals with licensure. It does deal with professional development, but with this whole new remote, we're looking at, uh, the needs changing, that it's really getting much more involved than just, you know, sitting down and working with, um, uh, the people that are presenting. There's really, there's a, a level of, um, technical knowledge that needs to be incorporated in there. So the position still does. Deb definitely still is involved in professional development, but not to the level that we're looking for with all the new changes.
So based off of that, I would say that this posting should be enhanced to include, uh, a, a different level of professionalism, uh, to, to meet these needs because it's li- literally looks like a mayor image of the position that we're seeing should be in, uh, HR. Um, so I, I, I think, Donna, if we can, um, sorry. Go ahead, Eva.
Um, I, I, I do want to say that there's a lot in that position that really is, um, curriculum based. Uh, so like, yes, there's some, there's some HR things, but we, we really do work hand in hand, hand with HR. When we think of our young teachers, our new teachers and our mentors, like that really is about building capacity. And so we really want to make sure that it is directed by somebody that has a definite knowledge base.
Yeah, a- a- and, you know, being, being on the, um, you know, negotiation, the Chairman and, and, and hearing the needs and concerns of, of teachers and, and educators in our district and all that, i- 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 it sounds like it's, it could be a, a, a good position, but I, I, I need more specifics in, in the posting to feel more comfortable with it because it's a ninety-two thousand dollar a year job, um, that, that needs to, uh, to, we need to make sure that the right person's in that position and they have the right responsibilities. I don't like overlapping. I don't like people stepping on each other's toes. I like collaboration, which is what we preach in our classrooms with, with our students. So, you know, there's, there's certain things that I, I think, uh, we need to come back at in that, in that position. And this wouldn't be the first time we've had to do that with the, uh, um, uh, the attendance officer. We had to do something very similar where we, you know, we, we had to come back at a trauma, you know, trauma-based and, and more of a, a role as a social type worker than as a, as a, an enforcer. So i- it happens. I think that, um, uh, the more we talk about it, the more we, 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 we hear, uh, different input from members like Jared with, with what he had to, to, to input. I think that, um, we could, we can come back to this at a later time, but I'm not ready to vote on it as, as presented today.
May I?
Ask, um, I'm just wondering, am I, am I muted? No. The instructional tech, the Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction for Instructional Technology, that whole responsibilities appears to line up. It talks about training sessions, training sessions, training sessions, training, you know, uh, to align with Lynn Public School curriculum for, for the staff, for the students' training. Um, how is that not pretty similar? And the other thing is, you know, we don't want to lay people off, but don't you have some people that are available to step up to the plate and, you know, if their job isn't like, um, I had three questions in regards to, oh, okay. What would be doing music art and, and phys ed this year? You know, if, if those are things we're not doing, we have Assistant Directors for, of Curriculum Instruction for Music, Art and Health, Health, uh, Health Phys Ed. But I'm just wondering, you know, every job description says perform any and all other duties as assigned by the superintendent or is designated for, but also says the, you know, the curriculum, uh, Executive Director. I'm just wondering, rather than jump into a, another job when we don't even have, um, our kids, you know, in school, we don't want to do layoffs, can't you reach, you know, some of those that are, um, are maybe ha- just gonna be set back a little bit during this time and utilize them?
Yeah. I, I, I would say, uh, respectfully that, uh, right now, everybody is at full tilt. Uh, even, even, you know, in scenarios where it might appear like there are gonna be differences in certain content areas, right now, everybody is, you know, i- is going a hundred miles an hour. I'd also say that, uh, in the posting, uh, there's a diversity of, this is not specifically for schoolagey or around professional development and technology. It, it's in, it's across the board. Um, and so, you know, I, I am happy to, uh, at our, at our next meeting, uh, propose a Subcommittee meeting where, uh, we add some additional, uh, substance to the position, uh, as member Sadoway proposed. Uh, I think I'll also present to you some specifics around the kind of savings that this position, uh, would create for the district. Um, you know, i- i- it's, I, I, I think that piece is being missed here that, uh, and, and I'm sure that I said it. Um, adding this position wouldn't, wo- would eliminate the need, almost eliminate the need to hire some of the outside, uh, consultants that we hire to do this work for us. And so, uh, the money's being spent already. We're trying to spend less, do it more efficiently and have it in-house. Uh, but I'm happy to provide some specifics on that the next time.
Is that agreeable to you, Lorraine? We'll take no vote today. Is that Michael?
Uh, I'm fine with that. Um, what, one other thing, uh, Patrick, though, is eliminating all, uh, other professionals, uh, in the, in these areas of education isn't what we're hoping to do. Um,
sorry?
I, I, the, the, having just one person with basic knowledge in all these areas isn't always the, the, the best bet, you know, I, I don't want to eliminate.
That's not what I'm proposing at all. Uh, I'm talking about a skill set with the design and facilitation of, of professional, of professional development. It's not having, you know, you're sort of being a master of all, uh, you know, content areas, uh, and, and all, you know, elements of the Lynn Public Schools. It is about a person who has, uh, deep, deep knowledge around how, uh, adults learn. Uh, it is a per- it is a position that, uh, would require understanding of how to facilitate, um, you know, professional development. It's not about being, you know, that's not what I'm proposing at all.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Donna, with, um, with, uh, I think because we're doing it on, online, we have to take a, a roll call.
Okay. Um, Mary, roll call, please. Capola, motion to adjourn. Ms. Capola. Yes. Ms. Gately.
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway.
Yes. Thank you. Tom, you here?
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. Is everybody ready? We're ready to go right into the, uh, the full meeting. And I will read the, uh, I have a statement to read related to the meeting and then we'll go into, um, roll call of people who are here as well, members as well as, um, uh, people that are on as part of the administration, and then we'll go into the full meeting. So with that, good evening. Uh, this is, uh, welcome to the eighth special meeting of the Lynn School Committee, Wednesday, August fourth, two, twenty twenty. The preliminary matter, we will confirm attendance. So at this point, I would ask Mary to confirm all members and persons anticipated, um, on the agenda and present. Uh, so if Mary, you could, um, do a roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos.
Present.
Ms. Capola.
Present.
Mr. Ford.
Present.
Ms. Gately.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Mr. Sadoway.
Present.
Mayor McGee.
Present.
Dr. Tutwiler.
Present.
Attorney Mahos.
Present.
Mr. McHugh.
Present.
Ms. Powers.
She got kicked off. I'm trying to get her back in.
Ms. Regero.
Present.
Ms. Jules, present.
Thank you. Again, this is, uh, this is Mayor Tom McGee. I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations where all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the city website. This allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public ass- access is afforded. The public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation, participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. This meeting, the Lynn School Committee is convening, uh, by, um, Zoom platform is posted on the city's website. Note this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen, screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You know, I'm gonna, uh, and before we turn to the, um, well, we're gonna be turning to the first item on the agenda, uh, before we do so, I want to commit, uh, cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chairman, I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda and after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute, move your, uh, to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Members, if members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair. Take care to identify yourselves. Uh, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Uh, and as been indicated at the prior, um, Subcommittee meeting, uh, there is a limit of a hundred, uh, people to be able to be on this platform, the Zoom platform, and there are problems tonight with the live feed for Lynn Cable. So there was a motion made and I will make the motion again to that, uh, to allow access for people that are trying to see the meeting, that, um, Facebook Live stream can be, uh, uh, available through the members. Uh, and I, I'll make a motion to allow that, to, to ensure that people that want to follow tonight's meeting will, will have a number of options to do that. Uh, Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a question about that. Uh, can, can Dr. Tutwiler as host, um, broadcast the meeting through the Zoom application on Facebook? Uh, Zoom lets you share your meetings on Facebook, depending on the sentence.
Question, I don't know that answer. Dr. Tutwiler?
Uh, I, I, I don't know how to do that. I would need Shannon Bancefield here to, to gain us access. Um, so, sorry.
And I think, uh, and as like I said, we would be, uh, this will be going live on cable. We will work towards the next meeting to work on that, but it does allow us, obviously, it's not as, it's not as convenient as would be, but allowing Facebook, um, live stream and there's a motion on the floor.
And, and just you can know, I have a hundred and eighty-nine-four people viewing it from my Facebook Live, so there's interest in it.
Yeah, I just want to say I have fifty-five and it's grown, so like, it's like just a lot of people coming in and tuning in tonight, so.
Good. And so, so we know for sure that there's access and, and like I said, that's why the motion's on the floor. Uh, we want to ensure that people have access to this and, and so the motion has been seconded, requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gately.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes. And, and one final point, this is being recorded even though it's not live and that will definitely be made available as well. So, um, uh, Dr. Tutwiler, you have a question?
Yeah, just an update. Um, Shannon Bancefield, uh, tells me that it, it can be streamed on the, uh, Lynn Public Schools Facebook page. And so if she's here, go ahead and make that up.
Great. So not only, so that's a good point and hopefully people that are on Facebook Live streaming in that that is being, being made available. I appreciate your help on that, uh, Dr. Tutwiler. So, uh, so that will be also be able to be streamed through, um, want to explain that again so we all understand, Dr. Tutwiler, on how that works.
Uh, for, for those who, uh, follow the Lynn Public Schools Facebook page, uh, I believe, according to Shannon, um, this, uh, can and will be streamed, uh, live on that, on that, uh, platform.
So if that's a better, um, connection for people that are live streaming through members Castellanos and Sadoway, that's an option as well. Uh, and if anyone is texting in or reaching out to anyone that's listening, uh, they can, uh, indicate that there is other options to make sure that this is, um, being able to be viewed by those that want to be part of tonight's meeting. So thank you all for that. Uh, with that, we will, um, I, I, I know John, uh, John has, is there a flag there? I do have a flag that's next to me that I would ask everyone to s- join me in a salute to the flag. I will share that with, with, the flag is next to me. We will, uh, salute the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, we'll go into the agenda. Uh, first on the agenda tonight, uh, is appointments and elections. And I'd ask Dr. Tutwiler if you would, um, speak to those. There's two, uh, listed.
Glad to.
Thank you.
Uh, it is my pleasure to, uh, celebrate the appointment of Travis Harris, uh, who's been appointing the acting ESL Department Head at Classical High School, uh, replacing Amanda Curtis, who is now the acting, uh, Vice Principal at that school. Congratulations to Mr. Harris. And then also a name very familiar, uh, to us in the technology world, uh, Sean McManus has been appointed the Assistant Network Administrator, has done a really nice job for us, uh, over a number of years and, uh, uh, also wishing him well in his new role.
Great. Well, welcome and, uh, congratulations to both of those, both Travis and Sean. Uh, uh, walk, welcome aboard. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, reo- the reopening plans. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler?
Yep, glad to.
Thank you.
Share my screen here. Just give me a moment. If I can give a thumbs up if you can see that. Thank you. All right. So, um, you, you know, th- this evening, I mean, we've been working really, really hard, really since, uh, I'd say we first started talking about and thinking about, uh, reopening in the fall, you know, as early as April, um, you know, with no real guidance on that, but beginning to think about how, uh, school would look and feel, uh, in a post, what we thought might be, uh, a post-COVID, uh, United States. We're, we're still very much in the thick of it. Uh, but in any case, uh, we've dedicated hundreds of hours to sweating the details, uh, and really collecting input, uh, and feedback. And, uh, what I'm gonna do this evening, um, is three things. Uh, one second here. Uh, I'm gonna make a proposal for a model that I believe is most appropriate, uh, to the start of the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, as I've, uh, mentioned, uh, the Commissioner has asked that, uh, school committees approve. uh, has asked that uh, school committees approve of the model to reopen the, the school year. And so uh, it's my intention to do that this evening. I intend to do so first by describing the context in which the proposal is being made. Then the process we engage that drives the proposal. And then I want to say a little bit about the proposal itself. Uh, before I go any further, uh, I, I'd want to acknowledge uh, that I know that families and students and staff have been eagerly awaiting this proposal. I'm aware that other districts have released parts of their plan or shared a proposal for reopening in the fall, most of which have done so in the past, you know, week or so. Some did so weeks ago. I purposely did not race to any conclusion. I thought it best to spend time engaging the analysis, listening to stakeholders, following the advice and consultation of our building leaders and directors, and taking the time to survey correctly. In that way, I understand and acknowledge people's frustration. But I would prefer that people be frustrated over confused. Releasing a plan too early with all of the changes and an early release plan would need to undergo causes confusion. That's the last thing this community needs. In any case, I'm happy to present to you the model that I believe is most appropriate. By way of reminder, our task was to develop three plans, one for in-person learning with safety requirements, a hybrid model featuring some in-person and some remote learning, and a full remote learning model where students would learn exclusively from home. This comes from the June twenty-five uh, release of the guidance. We really want to start with the context. You know, what is the context in which we're doing these analyses and uh, attempting to make decisions? Our work is always done within a context to which we must pay attention. Each day, I receive an email with the COVID statistics in our ci- in the city of Lynn. I believe all school committee members do. This graphic represents a dashboard and data released today. For me personally, it's a daily reminder of the loss and impact felt and experienced in our city.
Okay.
From a broader context, I'm also mindful of the fact that the impact is greater here than anywhere else in the state as of late. Here, you can see that as of July twenty-ninth, the percentage of positive tests over a fourteen-day period are approaching four-point-five percent, a rate higher than any other city in the state of Massachusetts. Beyond what I know to be the real impact of COVID-19, we've seen planning, we've been planning, excuse me, during a period of immense fluidity. The initial guidance for reopening was issued on June twenty-fifth. In the past three weeks, eleven additional, additional guidance documents have been released. I received a twelfth three hours ago. Many of these documents have significant impact on planning and in some cases have resulted in needing to change course or make alterations to our plan. Additionally, the science around and understanding of COVID is evolving, perhaps not in a major way, but evolving nonetheless. Our planning has moved along in this context and is built on a philosophical foundation, the same that we employed since March. We want to first pin to the hierarchy of need, to the physical and mental, mental health of each student and staff member, as well as food security and housing stability. A close second is creating optimal learning conditions for students. We know that there's loss and thus want to ensure a robust program for accelerating, not remediating, learning this fall. And then finally, we want to ensure clear and frequent communication. To organize our work, we established four operational teams, each with a specific focus. In many ways, the focus here was to draw upon the skills and expertise of our team to lead processes to move the ball forward in our planning. There was also deep intention with a defined header or title for each team. Given that we have five explicit core values, collaborative relationships, inclusiveness, high expectations, shared responsibility, and inspiring lifelong learning, we felt that the planning needed to reflect those four values. Thus far, we've made significant district initiatives a collaborative experience, whether it's developing the community, the strategic plan for the district or soliciting community input for the Student Opportunity Act Plan. We've consistently sought input and feedback from families, students, partners, and our colleagues. This process was no different. Whether it was the advisory, soliciting feedback from families and staff via dedicated email addresses, or attempting to understand the picture through survey, there's been a genuine effort to understand the thoughts, opinions, and feelings related to reopening. With defined working groups and established partner in the advisory and survey, and survey and other data, there needed to be additional work to prepare. This involved, but was not limited to, analyzing space to determine the extent to which we could accommodate students for in-person learning according to the guidance. There needed to be analysis of other building concerns that could play a role in transmission, such as ventilation and air quality. Further, there needed to be an as, an assessment of what was needed to ensure uh, a seamless hand washing and hand sanitizing and a determination of cleaning protocols. Central to what we do, there needed to be deep thought dedicated to teaching and learning what it would look like in each of the three models that the stu- given that the students have not been in school since March. Further, there needed to, we needed to assess whether or not additional staff was needed to successfully carry that out. Finally, central to our planning uh, is understanding how we can best support the physical and mental needs of our students and staff. This includes, but not, is not limited to assessing nurse, nurse staffing, social worker staffing, identifying community partners uh, to support us in our efforts. With all of these analyses and more ongoing, I submit to you that we've taken giant steps toward the readiness for the fall. This includes an effort to understand staff, students, and families' perspective via survey and direct email. It includes leveraging FY20 funds to make significant purchases in the realms of personal protective equipment or PPE, technology, and more recently identifying and securing storage space in an effort to move furniture in classrooms for physical distancing purposes. Finally, professional development is already underway in the realm of social-emotional learning and there have been informal offers for staff to participate in Schoology, our new learning management system. A framework for professional development during the ten days, which we'll talk about in our next uh, agenda item, uh, for staff and services being developed as I speak, but will focus heavily on health and safety, mental health and trauma, teaching and learning, and teaching and learning specifically on our new student learning management system. In short, a massive amount of work has gone into thinking about how best we, how we can best support the processes of teaching and learning and support each of the three models which were required to develop. Next, I want to offer insight into where we landed in terms of each of the three models. The plan I will spend the least amount of time on is that for in-person instruction with safety requirements. As you can see in this graphic, the plan can only work at the elementary level. It calls for a shift to AM, PM kindergarten, as all plans do in fact, and also a physical distant, distancing ability of at least three feet in all elementary classrooms. The enrollment at middle and high school levels is simply too large to do five-day in-person learning. The challenge at the elementary levels are prohibitive with this model. I'll focus on number three. In the principal's space analysis, we embrace the idea that every space is a learning space. Therefore, any viable and safe space in a school was considered for classroom instruction. Principals then use their projected enrollment to determine how, how many students they could accommodate following the physical distancing requirements. In many schools, new registrations would be difficult to accommodate. We already have three grade levels, excuse me, grade levels in three schools that cannot accommodate all of the students at the physical distancing of three feet. There are some schools that ac- that can accommodate their entire class at a degree of physical distancing greater than three feet. That said, as I often say, we are a school system, not a system of schools. It seemed extremely important to enter, inappropriate, excuse me, to entertain the idea of opening some schools in one model and others in another. By way of definition, the hybrid model involves offering some student, offering students some in-person learning and some remote learning. Leveraging feedback from staff, families, and students as well as rigorous analysis of safety and student learning, we landed on a two-day model for elementary schools. That means simply that all students would receive two days of in-person instruction and three days of virtual or remote instruction. At our high schools, given the complexity of sched- of the scheduling scenario and out of a desire to allow students to engage in the diversity of courses that they selected last spring, we decided on the A-B week model. This means that half of the student body would receive in-person instruction while the other half received remote or virtual instruction one week. And then they would flip the following, the following week. And all of these models, time on learning according to the new guidance for one-hundred-and-seventy days for one-hundred-and-seventy-day school year is achieved. Our analysis indicates that we can distance students on the elementary level at a degree of six feet in the two-day model, provided that half of the students attend on two days for in-person learning at a time. At the middle and high school levels, we can distance students at a degree of four feet. And our values aligned is on prioritizing groups of students who require more to receive more. Clear on this graphic is our attempt to provide certain groups of students more in-person support. This is equity. It is proposed that in the hybrid model, FECT-O'Leary students would continue to receive five days of in-person instruction on an altered schedule. LEAP students largely engage in online coursework. They would continue to do so remotely, but we would offer English learners the opportunity for ESL instruction in person. And finally, all self-contained programs and pre-K would receive four days of in-person instruction each week. As you might imagine, there are many suitable features of the hybrid model. There are some concerns about the context that I described earlier in this presentation. It did not include the nurse staffing concerns in the in-person model. However, it is a serious one. At present, we've established at least one full-time nurse in each building. However, if one falls ill or cannot report, we are extremely limited for substitution. Agencies with whom we've contracted in the past aren't always able to provide us with support and there's not a large pool to draw from or hire uh, for nursing substitution. Finally, there's still some exposure on the new registrations in the hybrid model. Should we see the kinds of registration activity that we have in previous years, it could impact physical disting- distancing ability and thus force a full remote scenario. The current model for which we were to develop a plan is full remote learning. This simply means that students would engage learning other than a school building. Here, you know, I, I really want to make clear the profound difference between what students experience between the months of March and June and what is planned for the fall. To say that remote learning is vastly improved actually is an understatement. It is a complete and total new experience. First and foremost, we have the tools to perform remote learning in a more dynamic and engaging way. This is so by virtue of the fact that all staff and all students will have a device. We've already begun the distribution of staff devices, actually, as of Monday. Uh, and we're approaching seven thousand devices that distrib- distributed to students. At present, we will have enough, the, at the current moment, we have enough devices to accommodate all students, grades three through twelve, at a ratio of one-to-one. We applied for a grant to close the loop on devices for grades K to two. We expect uh, a public announcement on that any, any day now. We've also purchased and are in the process of integrating our new learning management system, Schoology. This is a robust, dynamic, and engaging learning platform. It allows us to communicate, to assess, to video conference, and much more. Embracing our principle of equity, we have uh, contracted with Comcast to help families who need internet service uh, at their home. And last but not least, we've identified days for both students and staff to skill up on uh, the new learning management system. Following the same principle in the hybrid model, certain groups of students are prioritized for in-person instruction, even in the remote model. Again, students at FECT-O'Leary, those engaged in the LEAP program, and uh, identified as English learners and all students in self-contained special education classes, which includes pre-K, would receive in-person instruction during remote learning. To be clear, whether ever a scenario where the state moved into quarantine or if Lynn exceeded an identified threshold of cases, the groups uh, prioritized for in-person learning would then pivot to full remote learning. We know that there are students beyond those identified for in-person learning in the remote model who need additional supports. We're proposing learning support centers where students and families would sign up for in-person or virtual supports as needed or recommended. There are challenges in every model, not one of them is perfect. I've mentioned often that our planning has been done with family needs front of mind and I really meant that. But I want to acknowledge that this is the least family-friendly model, especially uh, for those with younger students. That said, I've also said that nothing supersedes students and staff safety. If driven by necessity, this model would need to be leveraged. I can say with some degree of confidence, based on the survey, uh, that this was not necessarily their choice, family's choice, uh, at the time the survey was completed, based on the percentage of families who indicated a willingness to send their student for in-person instruction. Finally, the Commissioner of Education has said it and I know the recommendation of the Academy of Pediatrics uh, is for in-person instruction. Remote learning is not aligned with those recommendations. And finally, if I could just say briefly a little bit about uh, the Remote Learning Academy. Uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recently, uh, two days ago, uh, identified a learning management system that will be available statewide for families who would like to keep their children home to learn remotely exclusively. The informations on this platform are just beginning. There was one this afternoon. But I feel duty-bound to provide this as an option for family. but I feel duty-bound to provide this as an option for families who are not interested in any in-person learning for the year. Transition to a hybrid model is a possibility for the school year, if ever we are in remote learning. The details of the DESI model have not been released, but we'll be investigating and intend to offer this as an option for families. And now, having said that, I'm proposing to reopen the Lynn Public Schools in a remote learning capacity with in-person learning for certain groups of students. And here's why. Bear with me. This is something over which I've agonized for some time. As I said before, we swept the details, turned every stone, and paid close attention to the trends both locally and statewide. It's clear to me that right now the state is trending in a concerning direction. Last week, positive cases were up fifty-one percent over a period of the previous two weeks. As I've already indicated, the positive cases in Lynn over the fourteen days prior to July twenty-ninth were the highest in the state. As I'm sure many of you have, I've been watching the reopening of schools across the country and the related headlines. A school in one state reopened for in-person learning, and on the second day needed to quarantine a number of students and staff because a student, because of a student who tested positive. I wasn't so much surprised by that as I was the superintendent declaration that they knew it was a when situation, not an if. I'm not sitting in judgment of that individual. I'm merely saying that if the mindset, if that, that is the mindset, if you're certain that there will be positive cases that will disrupt school, and worse yet, disrupt lives, why would one proceed with a full in-person learning model? Given the trend statewide and within the city, it would be irresponsible of me to recommend anything but that which I described in the full remote model. Furthermore, we are a little more than a month away from the first day of school. It has always been my intention to give families enough time to plan. I'm not sure if folks remember, but my initial inclination was present a plan on July fifteenth. Thank goodness I didn't do that. I need to land in a place on a plan and allow families time to plan. I can't predict the future, but given what I know right now, I think this is the right approach. Given that any reasonable individual can predict positive cases in the schools, along with that prediction comes the reality of massive disruption. According to the DESI guidance, when a student or staff member tests positive, those within close contact of that individual, defined as being within six feet for ten to fifteen minutes, need to get tested or quarantined. I'm envisioning a scenario where this could potentially happen with a degree of frequency making for a supremely disruptive experience for students and staff. I'm awestruck by the amount of new information that comes out on a regular basis relative to COVID nineteen. This is still very much an evolving situation. The medical community is still evolving in its understanding of the virus, who is most susceptible, transmission scenarios and so forth. And finally, as I mentioned before, I still believe that inviting for in-person instruction groups of students whose needs are uniquely misaligned with remote, remote instruction speaks to our values around equity. I believe that we can do so safely, given the small population of students in these categories and our efforts to purchase protective equipment for students and staff. Much as the state has, I think a phased reopening is the right approach. I'm characterizing the phases in terms of steps, not necessarily toward a particular end, but rather steps ahead while being vigilant and making smart decisions. That involves three steps or phases, learn and prepare, transition, and assess. So I'll say a little bit about each of them. The first phase generally involves preparedness, getting ready. As I mentioned earlier, we have the tools forthcoming. Engaging in adult learning activities designed to support providing the most effective supports and optimal instruction is a thrust of the learning and, learning and prepare, learn and prepare phase. This includes, but is not limited to, deep professional development in three critical areas, health and safety, trauma response, and Schoology, our learning management system. Keep in mind that Schoology is the mechanism. Teaching and learning, teaching, learning, and assessment are the activities that will happen through that mechanism. As we prepare to embark on an experience with teaching and learning we have not yet had before, there needs to be systems and structures built in to ensure the success for every student. I'm proposing a five-day transition period wherein no more than twenty percent of the students enrolled in a school will be in the building to engage in activities and to set them up for success with remote learning. Say a little bit about that. Here you can see the kinds of activities that would be done over the five days to ensure equity of access and opportunity from the very beginning. I'm not going to read all of them to you, but the point, but I'll point out that in-person time would be that for meeting a student's teacher. Can't underscore how important that is for a student to actually meet his or her teacher. This is also time for a student to get, get a device if he or she did not already have one and practice and get some practice with Schoology. The remote, the remote orientation time would be focused on practicing skills and activities from home. I am proposing a start to the school year in remote learning and an assessment date of November twentieth. That is the Friday before Thanksgiving. It is also approximately seven weeks into the flu season. On that date, we would make a decision or make a determination as to whether to transition to a hybrid or remain in remote learning. If the decision is to transition to hybrid, I would recommend doing so on December first or on a date deemed most suitable for our families. Building-based teams, let's say a little bit about what the remote learning will look like. Building-based teams have spent an inordinate amount of time developing schedules that would work for all three scenarios. Here, if I could just editorialize for a moment, creating a new schedule for a school is is, is, is a lot of work. If we think about the amount of time that it took for us to come up with a new high school schedule, it took us about a year. I've been principal in two buildings, and in both of those buildings, we've shifted or created new schedules. And that planning took about a year. This endeavor caused, called for us to create schedules on three levels in three different scenarios, and we had about two months. So I just want to underscore that this is not an easy undertaking and took a lot of hours, and I, I want to thank the folks who put their heart and soul into trying to come up with something that would work for students and families. I'd like to pivot briefly to showcasing sample schedules for an early elementary school, middle school, and high school so as to give a sense for what that might be like. Note that the schedules have been developed, the, the schedules that have been developed here all adhere to the DESI requirements with respect to time on learning and other important features of student accountability and communication. Here again, it's important to underscore the difference between remote learning in the upcoming year versus that with which we ended the previous school year. There are specific expectations around attendance and grading unlike the close of the previous school year. It's also important to note that with the exception of the high school, the schedules for remote learning mirror those for hybrid learning. This allows for ease of transition should we, should the conditions allow for us to transition to a hybrid model. And I'd also like to point out that while we believe we are set with these schedules, they too can change a little bit because the guidance for remote learning just came out about five hours ago, so we'll need to take a closer look at that and make sure that we are adhering to the letter of that guidance and what we're thinking about for opening and remote learning. It's a little tough to see here, but I'll describe it. The early elementary school day runs from seven forty-five to twelve forty-five P M. During that period of time, there will be synchronous, which means live and in-person, social-emotional learning-driven activities to start the day, followed by a mix of core content instruction delivery and built-in time for breaks. You will note at the bottom of this graphic that we will still proceed with A M P M kindergarten. We are doing so because two hours and fifteen minutes of screen time is a lot for a student that age. And also, the schedule must be the same should we transition to a hybrid model. In the middle section, you will see a presentation of the in-person learning time four days per week for pre-K and students in sub-separate classrooms. It's also maybe a little bit tough to see, but I'll describe it. In middle school, students will follow the same schedule in, in the remote fashion as they would in a hybrid schedule. They will receive core content instruction until one fifteen, of course, with breaks and things of that nature. And an asynchronous, which means a recorded lesson, and physical education at the close of the day. Students in some sub-separate classes would receive in-person instruction from seven forty-five to one fourteen, one fifteen, four days per week. And finally, for high school, the remote learning schedule, this is the only remote learning schedule that departs from the hybrid model. In the remote mode, in remote mode, we would collapse the A B schedule into one big group. That way, they would be able to engage more seamlessly in a connected experience for online learning that begins at eight A M and ends at eleven fifty-five or twelve twenty-five, Monday through Friday. Here again, students in sub-separate classes would attend four days per week, per week for in-person instruction and would be dismissed at the same time as the middle school students. Transportation may drive those times slightly in one direction or another. This is not a schedule, obviously. I've used this graphic before, actually in a budget presentation in my first year. As you look at it, it appears to be a very long sort of hallway, but it's actually only eight meters long. It's one of those perspective wonders. I place it here to underscore that there must be perspective, perspective related to reopening. This is new and it will take time to adjust. It feels like and looks like we've got a long way to go, and there is a lot of work to be done. A lot of work to be done. But we're much closer than meets the eye. I believe in our team, the teachers, our families. I believe that if we stick together on this, we can successfully reach a positive end together. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Towiler. And before we get to questions, I know, I'm sure there's plenty. I just want to add some information that I received later today in terms of the data reflective of the caseload. At this point, the, the percentage rate, you know, I know you showed the data reflective of percent of positive cases from July twenty-sixth through August first, and then that is nine point seven one. The last time we were at that level or above was in early, in mid-May. And then looking at, again, at the data reflective of what you showed on the chart, everybody was in the four, three to four percentage category on positivity. We actually were for a number of weeks at a level of, you know, under four percent for four weeks in July, and then a little over four percent, and now we're up at nine point seven one. The trend over the last ten days is troubling. The, from August first, the thirty-five new cases on August first, thirty-five on August second, seven on August third, twenty-three on August fourth, and today thirty-two new cases. So that reflects probably, and I'm not clear on other cities and towns, but we definitely are substantially upticking compared with other communities that I think are legitimately in our category. That's, so that's the current data reflective of the, what's going on in Lynn right now. And I, I think it's really important to reiterate, because I know there's a lot of people on this, this call, that we are the ones that can change the dynamic by wearing masks, social distancing, being smart, washing eye hands, and being diligent about all of these. And we're seeing the results of this, this dangerous virus again rearing its head here in the city of Lynn. I just want to finish with what was in today's item on Dr. Yami Mahania, who, you know, and hopefully people had a chance to read it, but I'll just reiterate completely out of the question of fully reopening the schools. And he basically said if I was really pushed to make, that I really had that, remote is the way he would recommend. And so he, you know, it's a story to read because it reflects on what we're, we're facing, and I just want to make one final point. I know everybody's raising their hands. The Lynn Health Department does not agree with DESI's guidelines related to when you test positive and the timeline, there's not a fourteen-day timeline, there's a much more limited timeline in terms of what DESI is recommending if there are either students or teachers that, that are tested positive. They do not agree with DESI's recommendations related to that, and I'd be willing to guess that most of the local departments of health don't necessarily agree with what DESI is recommending related to positive tests, both for students and, and teachers in the school. I see a member Sato White, and then member Nicholson, and I'm sure there'll be other members. Member Sato White, member Nicholson, then member Castellanos.
Thank you. Patrick, can you go to the slide before the, the Italian pillar slide, please?
Thumbs up if you can see that.
I can see it. So Thursday, it looks like Schedule E and Schedule F are at the same time. I'm assuming that's an error. Eight to nine twenty-five, both times?
It would be, yep.
So it should be, it should look like Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay. And the reason why those classes are longer by, it looks like fifteen or twenty minutes is because you only have it twice a week, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm happy with the outcome that you brought up for this upcoming school year. As a parent of a student, a picker, and I told you multiple times that she was gonna only do remote learning. You know, when we started our subcommittee meeting and then our regular meeting, and we had Donna and, and, and the mayor read why we're doing Zoom, because we're still within that emergency declaration, it'd be, we'd be falling on deaf ears if we, if we literally, I think, started with the, with the hybrid model. I think it's a sliding scale, and that's why DESI submitted it as so, where it's four, three, two, and then they didn't even have a fully integrated in-person option. So let's just go with that sliding scale. It's, it's very important to do the steps that you're taking today, and I'm, I'm very happy that we moved off of that, the hybrid model and more, more towards the remote with the expectation that if, if needed, we can slide the scale and go to remote. So, you know, obviously we want to head in that direction, but we need to, to make sure that we're on the right footing and but we need to to make sure that w- w- we're on the right footing and the science and the data, they, they, they go hand in hand with why the remote should, should, should be where we start, so I appreciate that. Um you know, people are, are reaching out on uh Facebook Live and and text messaging me asking uh more so about Lynn Tech and the uh programs that they offer there and then sports. So if you can uh chime in with those uh two, uh I think areas that have much interest, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yep. So uh as you know, uh Desi came out with guidance uh on vocational schools. That was uh and I'm not trying to be critical, uh but pretty superficial. Um and so uh what we would like to do, uh because you know, that that is, you know, vocational education is very hands-on. I mean, you can't necessarily, you know, do precision machining uh from your home on a computer. Um what we would like to do is wait for further guidance to come out. Uh and we would like to propose scenarios where uh the vast majority of the um, you know, learning happening at home for students who attend Lynn Tech, uh but that we would have them in, in small groups, particularly the uh upperclassmen uh to get some of the training on machines and uh, you know, in the electrical shop and things of that nature. Already, uh there are existing regulations um around class size uh and adult supervision uh in shops. And so uh those classes tend to be smaller anyway. Uh but we need to wait for additional guidance on that, and I know it's the eleventh hour, but um as I said, we just got the remote learning guidance today. So um that's where we are on that. Athletics, uh you know, it is, is still u- up in the air. Uh the latest is that uh on September, if there's going to be a fall season, it would start on September fourteenth. Uh I'm sort of reading the tea leaves here and looking at what uh some or many colleges or whole conferences are doing, uh which is to uh cancel uh fall athletics uh in total uh or reschedule certain uh, you know, competition teams for the spring. Um we're, we're waiting on that. And I, I, I think that is going to be a scenario where uh they won't make a decision until very, very close to um, you know, uh early to mid-September. I will say this, though, if there's any question or worry about um participation in athletics when a district is in full remote learning, uh we are still allowed. But uh, you know, being true to safety first, uh I would want to work with uh our Department of Health, uh our Nursing Department to determine, you know, whether or not it's safe for, for, for that to happen uh in this city, so.
And uh for, for, one of the things you said you were gonna get back to us on was the uh report from the Building Department o- on the um uh he- health of our school buildings um i- in the event that uh the hybrid happens. Have you received anything in return? And until we get that and we're comfortable, I prefer that we use classical and Marshall as uh in-person learning centers, um because they seem to be the m- more newer buildings uh with uh with, it seems to be better ventilation. Um.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I had a conversation with Mike Donovan now. That, that is ongoing. Uh they've already taken, uh as I've, I've shared with you, a number of uh steps to prepare for safe re-entry, and that involves uh a rigorous analysis of classrooms in each building, uh ensuring that windows can open or repairing them if they can't, um scaling up uh the frequency of uh, you know, replacement of filters, uh getting uh higher um rating filters uh installed, uh sanitizing uh air handling systems. You know, that, that's all, that's all happening in preparation for people being in the building. I would say that we've got, we've got six buildings that have uh steam heat and thus uh lack the uh fresh air exchange systems. Um we're gonna want to take a closer look at those, but um once that analysis is done, absolutely, I'd share that. Uh but we're working on it with I S D on that, on that issue.
When we have issues with mold and other things in our building, i- 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 it's it, you know, th- there are a lot of buildings that are old that have issues uh and you know, that, that's how I feel about that. So I just, I would prefer if we, we focused on a couple, like you said, centralized uh learning centers for, for in-person, um for any in-person uh meetings with, with students. Um and uh I'll yield and uh to see if anyone else has any other questions that are similar to mine. Thank you.
Mem- member Nicholson, member Castellanos, then member Gailey, and then member Ford. And then member Capola. So we'll run, we'll run across all of the members. Member J- Nicholson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh and thank you, Dr. Tewiler, for that, that uh presentation. I also just want to thank everyone for all their hard work that's gone into planning for the different scenarios. Uh I know it's a lot. And I, and I also want to thank all the teachers and families that have reached out to share their perspective on this issue. This is really important. Um I, 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 I think it's, it should be clear from tonight. I think we all agree that, that the circumstances forcing us into remote learning uh doesn't mean that we're not concerned about the risk of, of losing learning when kids aren't in school. Um or, or the real distress that this is gonna cause families who just need more help. Um and I, I know everyone's working really hard to address that, and I really appreciate that. Um I also just want to point out, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about the state guidance, and I just think that the, the fact that the state has asked us to plan for three scenarios and to make, to make a choice for three scenarios when the facts on the ground in our city really suggest that there's only one scenario that we could do that's safe, uh just, just goes to show the power of the, of the structural inequalities that the district is up against. When you, when you think about the, the, this pandemic, we're, we're getting hit harder. We're getting hit harder because of economic disparities, because of racial disparities. Uh we have more frontline workers whose work is undervalued. Uh for, for workers who aren't deemed essential, they're losing their jobs. The unemployment rate in Lynn is, is, is twenty-five percent, and that, and that's real pain and uncertainty and insecurity uh that, that, that makes learning harder. And, you know, I think that the planning effort here has been tremendous, uh and I appreciate it. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. Uh but we're, 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 we, we're seeing that we, we never really had a shot to bring all our students back full-time altogether. That was never even gonna be on the table, and it's because our schools are overcrowded and the, the buildings are out of date and we're understaffed. And what's so frustrating on top of all this is that the funding that was uh meant to address, started to address those gaps, has, has evaporated, uh whereas the economy has collapsed. Uh so obviously, no one, no one is giving up, and, and, and I think I've heard a lot of positive development, positive developments tonight about uh what, what we can do to make remote learning better and work for people. And, and we do have a great team, right? Teachers, administrators, counselors, therapists, custodians, cafeteria workers, and, and, and I've heard from them all week uh and, and, and all summer really, about how much they care for their, their students and, and want to make it work. And uh, you know, we're just gonna need to find that way to, to get students the education they deserve. Um so I, I, one, one of the questions I want to ask, I thought the um the, some of the sort of uh improvements that, that we've made to the, the design of the supports to remote learning have been, were really positive. Um and, and wanted to ask a little bit more about the, the, the support uh uh centers, the learning support centers. And the, you know, uh Attorney Sadowite made a great point about the, the, the schools that are most conducive to those kind of things. And, and the other question I had there is, is there, are there possibilities for, for teachers who are willing and able um to, and, and with the, the right infrastructure behind them to create uh outdoor centers where people could socially distance and could also sort of uh participate in the remote learning in a more supervised environment where people could get their questions answered live?
Yeah, I, so I'll, I'll start with the learning support centers. I mean, that, that is, uh, I mean, you, you look at the, the requirements uh from Desi, they are asking for explicit descriptions of um outside of, of the school day, outside of school uh time. Uh how are you offering supports to students? Um where can they leverage uh, you know, additional support? And so right now, it's, it's, it's a framework. Uh we've got to do some more uh planning around what that would look like, where it would happen, uh whether or not, and I did say it was in, bo- both in-person uh and virtual, whether or not it's safe uh to provide that in-person. Certainly from a convenience standpoint, um uh, you know, students will have devices, staff will have devices, it can be done from, from anywhere. Uh so that's still in sort of beta uh format. Um and as it relates to, I mean, I, I'd apply the same response to uh the question about outdoor learning. I mean, I had a, a, a great uh Zoom with a, uh with an A born parent uh weeks ago, uh whose um, wh- wh- whose children went to uh a preschool in Lynn that offered uh outdoor education. It was that they, they learned outside and had a really wonderful experience. And so um that is part of our, um, you know, our, our exploration, thinking about uh what, what we can offer uh students next year. Like, is there an opportunity for, you know, a tent to be set up uh where, you know, maybe students can come and, you know, practice an instrument outdoors, which the guidance calls for, um only outdoor, certain instruments, uh only outdoor uh instruction, or um, you know, simply get support on, on work or, or, or something of that nature. That's something we're looking into, but then the conditions have to be safe. I mean, the more, the more oper- the more situations we're in, we're uh encouraging or um enabling uh, you know, face-to-face interaction, uh it, it may defeat the purpose of um, you know, going remote, uh which is why right now we're, we're pretty much at a place where um we're prior, the, the prioritized groups would get in-person support, uh and everybody else uh would learn remotely.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I, I had a follow-up question about the, the, the in-person learning because um I'm, I'm sure we're gonna, that there's gonna be a lot of important questions um from those, from those teachers who are working with those groups about uh the safety of this and, and, and how their concerns can be addressed. Um you had mentioned that uh there would be an identified threshold uh if the virus impact went beyond that, then, then that would, that would uh cease as well. Is that, have those thresholds been identified already, or is that something you're working on?
Uh so, y- y- you know, uh I, I am humble enough to admit uh when I'm in areas or in territory where I have no expertise, uh and I would not identify a threshold, um uh, you know, by which, you know, I would determine whether or not it would be safe uh for in-person learning. Uh I'm told that there is one forthcoming uh from the state level, uh but, but that, I mean, just raising that question really underscores part of the problem. Uh nowhere, not in the CDC guidance, not in Desi's reopening guidance, not in the Mass Department uh of, of health uh information and guidance, is there any information uh around, you know, when should a school district or a municipality close? Um it's, it's not there. And so as we look at schools and districts that have reopened in other states, they're, they're guessing, and I don't want to do that. Uh and so I, I think we wait for something uh formal to come out from, uh which I'm told is coming, um and then make a determin- uh make a determination thereafter. So for example, um if, you know, let's just, you know, say that it was five percent, which has been um a percentage uh that's been, that's been talked about. Uh of those tested, uh five percent are testing positive. If that was the rate in Lynn, uh that they said, you know, at this point, you know, you should not be doing in-person uh activities, then, then absolutely, um we, we, we want everybody safe. Make the same commitment to my colleagues that I do uh to families and to students. But if it was, you know, three percent in October before the date that we've identified to reassess, then I, 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 you know, I would say it'd be safe to engage in those activities. Um.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. And I know, remember Castellanos, I'll just answer that quickly. Uh uh we, I was on a call earlier today, I mean, if you see in a lot of different um communities on the North Shore, about forty-five different communities. And this discussion was pretty robust about what the, what the benchmark should be. We had a couple of experts on the call talking about uh where we should be going and some of the things we should be doing. So that is clearly on everyone's mind, what's the right benchmarks, what? And, and, and the question was, we need this information to make the, the right decisions, and that information is not available right now. So everybody's looking to find, find that answer. I think it's a great question, and, and it's, it's an ongoing discussion, not only with us in the city, but broadly um in other communities as well. Remember Castellanos?
I want to start by thanking everybody um that's worked so diligently on this since the pandemic hit. Um we really, you know, we are embarking in unmarked territory with what's happening. Um there's been so much loss, so much trauma. A lot of folks, I know I've been, you know, my constituents who are working, families who are teachers, um everyone is impacted by this. Um and, and reopening uh with safety in mind in, in the forefront is, is vital. Uh I really appreciate that, that, that presentation, uh Dr. Tewiler, that was uh really helpful. Um I have some questions, um and I, and just to bring back a little bit of the, the technology equities that we've made. You know, we've been able to get laptops to students, to staff, to make those investments, and, and, and to get it turned around and implemented that fast. Um I want to thank all the staff involved, um Massachusetts Teachers Association, the A F T, um your staff, everyone involved. Thank you. Um when we look at being proactive in our transition planning, um going from remote to a hybrid, when we get to that assessment period, um I think we gotta remember why we're here. Um we need to develop a, a, an effective virus surveillance system, something that we can monitor our, our students, our staff, our families. Um and what it, what I heard earlier is that we lack nurses and also the ability to track that, because it's unknown, because this virus is very, it's a very complex virus. And we have so many students, so many variables that, that partake with, obviously the buildings are older, uh ventilation issues, we're still waiting to hear back uh from I S D. We understand that due diligence was there. Um but being involved in public health, um hearing from the mayor, uh Lynn's an epicenter, as we know. Um and, and, and what we're looking for, for protocols, I know when Desi released, you got, you were very proactive on releasing that, you've been in communication on how we're gonna plan it. Um you've done a great job with all three plans, um and obviously I, with tonight, you're proposing a remote feature. Um what are some safety steps for sped? I know we, we have, we're gonna be looking to assist the, the, those populations, but what about those ESL, those spe- those, those different populations at F E C T O? What are some of the, the expectations for those staff? I know for, and those students as well who are our most vulnerable. Um but in a way, what, what are we doing to take those steps into uh consideration?
Yeah, I, you know, it, it, again, I go all the way back to, you know, the, the, the planning happened with uh values um and equity uh as the anchors. Uh and we know that um for, you know, in particular, students in self-contained special education programs, remote learning, remote learning can be tough for a lot of people. I, I should say that, but in particular, i- it's, it's really, really challenging to do remote learning for students in those programs, really challenging. And so, you know, I, I, I have a commitment. I mean, I've, we, we, we've established uh an email uh portal for families to communicate, and a lot of them have, and I appreciate that. Uh but I've heard from a lot of families um who have students who are in self-contained programs and have explicitly uh declared that they, they, they need their students to have that in-person uh experience. Uh their needs, they simply can't meet their learning needs uh at home. Uh and so uh we, we felt duty-bound to, to make that part of um, make that part of our plan in alliance with the Desi guidance. They um strongly encourage districts to encourage in-person experiences uh and even in remote uh scenarios for um students who fall into this category. And so, you know, you, you, I think you mentioned something about safety. Um y- you know, if it can't be done safely, I'm not gonna do it. I mean, that, that's where this proposal really comes from. I'm not comfortable uh given what I know about um the um percentage of positive cases right now. Um I'm not comfortable doing it. And so in the same way, if we get to a point where it just doesn't appear And so, in the same way, if we get to a point where it just doesn't appear like it can be done safely, then we're not gonna do it. Uh, and then we're gonna pivot to doing the best that we possibly can to make sure that those students get, uh, what they need. Uh, but, you know, we, we, as I mentioned in the presentation, we've purchased, uh, somewhere in the order, and Kevin's on the line, he can keep me honest here, four hundred thousand dollars worth of PPE, masks, face shields, gowns, um, we're having, um, you know, certain programs outfitted with, um, with Plexiglas, so that there can still be interaction that's face-to-face, but safe. Uh, you know, and then part of, I mean, our next agenda item is the, is the calendar, there needs to be training, you know, I mean, there needs to be, uh, really thoughtful and robust, uh, professional development around how to do this safely. Uh, and so, you know, it, it's, what you raise is, is important, uh, you know, it, but as, it's, it's driven our, 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 this proposal, uh, our thinking is driven by, uh, our values, uh, and, and, and we're gonna try to do it safe.
Thank you, and just, just a one, one piece about communication and outreach. Um, it's been so important for us to keep everyone, you know, we want to keep the public informed, we wanna make sure everyone's on the same page. Um, I think you, you know, mental health and social emotional resources, communicating the higher, um, priority resources are vital. I think coming into our, you know, when we come into a remote learning experience, like you said, it's different from when we were before. So, I think you're gonna, there's gonna be that communication that's important to ease those families. Also, we have families who, who don't, who weren't engaged in initially, uh, we have Latino families, Camero, we have all, we have such a diverse, uh, group of, um, families out there, um, I just, I just really wanna reassure, um, that we are, I, I know with the learning management system, there's so many different features in there that include, uh, diversity, inclusion, but that, that outreach, um, does occur. Um, you know, we are very, you know, there, there's, there's a working population out there that's very concerned. Um, there's essential workers that are, you know, worried about, you know, the remote learning feature and plan, they're, they're worried about, wow, I have a child that's in third grade, second grade, what am I going to do? And I think there's a lot of anxiety, but I think if we clean up communication now, as, as we are moving forward, um, and it's a lot more clear, but being proactive with outreach and communication and keeping it as clear as possible, and utilizing whatever platform, um, necessary, um, I really, um, as we, as we're here right now, I have a hundred and ten people on my phone, um, watching this, and I've never experienced this, uh, ever, honestly, on a, on a public meeting, but it's so vital to keep people informed, so.
I appreciate that. Uh, what I would just say quickly is that, um, you know, uh, I have a ten-year-old at home, and there are two working adults, and I, I've, I've been here every day since March. Uh, so, if there are families out there, and, and we are equally concerned about, you know, w- w- if there's a four remote scenario, what, what are we gonna do? Uh, we love little Charlie dearly, but he, he, he can't be home by himself, uh, and, and be expected, he's not gonna, he's not gonna sit down at the computer, he needs an adult to support him in that. And so, that's a challenge for us. And so, families who are in that position, like, I completely empathize with that. And so, uh, toward that end, um, right before our school committee meeting began, um, been in regular contact with our after-school care providers, our, uh, daycare providers, uh, we had a Zoom right before the school committee met, um, and I shared with them, um, that, you know, there's a likelihood that this was the direction we were gonna go, just to get them thinking about how they might, uh, support families through this, and, you know, they're, they're up to the task. You know, are they gonna be able to accommodate every student? No, they're not. Um, but, you know, as I said at the very end of that presentation, if we stick together, we can make this work, uh, and I, and I believe any community can do it as best.
Thank you, Dr. Totwiler. Thank you. Remember Gailey?
Dr. Totwiler, I am so happy that you decided, you know, after seeing the numbers about remote, because I did the same thing. I know I was sitting in a meeting with you, we were talking about your plan to go hybrid, and then I started seeing the numbers, and I, I just could not live with myself if anybody, um, contracted, goes to, to, to go hybrid. But I do have a question that somebody sent me, well, didn't send me, but they wanted learning, um, like, whether high school teachers will be required to teach from the building for, um, for remote? And also, what happens when high school teachers have kids in other districts doing remote, et cetera? Will they have to be, teachers have to be in the building teaching remotely? I didn't think that would be the case.
Uh, so I, I think that is a bridge that we still need to cross, now that we've landed in this place. Uh, I will say again, I mean, I just described to member Castellanos, uh, those who, if there's a teacher, uh, who lives in another district and they're, you know, they're doing remote also, and there's a young child, I, I'm in the same boat. Uh, and so, um, and, and I, and I, I have to come here every day, uh, and I'll be here every day, we'll figure it out. Um, but I'd also say that, um, you know, we've got, we've got a strong relationship with, um, Sheila O'Neil and with, uh, Dave Hegan, and these are conversations that we need to, to, to have, uh, if you approve what I'm proposing, um.
One other thing, could you go over the FECTO Larry, that model and remote, they're gonna go to school, the kids in FECTO Larry?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, a- again, with safety being front of mind, um, and, uh, with a, a, uh, guiding principle or, or, or value around providing in-person, um, experiences for some of our most fragile, uh, population. Um, you know, so FECTO, uh, i- is in a building that can accommodate, you know, over a thousand students, uh, and the enrollment there is, is less than two hundred. And so, if there's, i- if there's any building in the district where students can learn in a way that's physically distant, it's that one. Uh, and, um, what we're proposing there, just based on, um, what we believe the students need, they need to lay eyes on those students frequently. Uh, and so, uh, that, the proposal there is a five-day in-person, it is a shorter day, uh, they're out around noon, uh, but they would come, they would receive core instruction. Um, many of those students receive, uh, direct counseling during the day, that would happen. Um, so that's the proposal there, it's, they don't, no family, which is why I wanted to underscore this with the, uh, Remote Learning Academy, no family has to send their child, uh, so, and we've already been in touch with a number of families, uh, at that school who have indicated that, uh, they don't believe it would be safe for that, and, and we respect that. But I, I feel duty-bound to propose a scenario where at least we're offering it, because we believe that it would serve them well.
Right, cause I also heard from a lot of teachers and, um, specialists and, um, I, I would say over a hundred, and they're very concerned about going, um, face-to-face, you know, so that's why I, I don't know if that would work. I think we need to talk to the specialists, talk to Shaler and the teachers that would be involved in that, to see if they felt safe, you know, I don't know. But that's just my input. Thank you very much for the nice question.
Just quickly, um, you, you know, I, I celebrate our staff at every opportunity I, I, I get, um, uh, and I, and I, I did it in the presentation, and, and I'll, I'll do it again now. Um, this district goes nowhere without their efforts, uh, and their expertise, it goes nowhere, it doesn't matter how good I am, and the jury's still out, uh, it, it's, it's, people rise or fall on the backs of our staff, uh, and, uh, they're of utmost importance to me. Uh, I wouldn't propose a, uh, reopening scenario, uh, that I thought would be dangerous for them. Now, there may be some disagreements, uh, around that, but, you know, essentially, uh, with the exception of Shoemaker, uh, we're talking about, you know, a handful of classrooms in buildings designed to accommodate hundreds of students. Uh, so there's an ability to physical distance, we've got the personal protective equipment, uh, we've got the cleaning protocols, those of you who are at the graduation saw the fogging machine, like, there, there's one in every school, we've got all of that. Uh, and so, uh, I, if I didn't think that it was a, a safe, um, option, I wouldn't propose it, uh, but I do think it's safe, and, and there might be some who disagree with me, but, uh, the, the, the order of operations here is to, uh, propose it to you, uh, for you hopefully to agree and, um, approve it, uh, and then we'll engage in, uh, the next steps in terms of planning and working with the, the, uh, union leadership.
The thing is, I'm hearing from special ed teachers that, um, like, very concerned about, about going to school, that's, you know, going in, and like, why is, why is it, uh, unsafe for regular ed teachers not to be going, but teachers in special ed, it's okay for them? I understand the numbers lower, but they're still at risk, and our numbers are still high, and they're very concerned. I just want you to know that, that that population is really, if teachers are really concerned, and send that out to Shaler O'Neil also. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Uh, I also hear directly from teachers frequently, and I appreciate it, I embrace their feedback. Um, I didn't say that regular ed teachers wouldn't also come to the buildings. Uh, I just said that that's a conversation that, uh, needs to be had.
Okay, thank you.
Number four, and then member Paul.
Um, Mr. Totwiler, I want to thank you for your, uh, decision tonight. Um, I have two daughters that, uh, that also appreciate your diligence, and I know a lot of time and effort went into this. I just have three quick questions. Uh, when we opened, um, the live, um, special needs, FECTO, and LEAP, will we, will we have the six foot, the six-foot distancing at those?
You, you could, you could do, you could do more than six feet. Just on the numbers.
And, and the second, when we go to the, um, the smaller groups, um, in the, the three scenarios, is it possible to do temperature checks coming into the building? I know that's, that's a lo- a bit of an effort, but you could stop a problem at the door, rather than have it come in and mingle with, you know, and then affect the whole, the whole group. I, I just think it's a good idea, we get smaller numbers, we can maybe do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can take that up with, um, uh, the Director of Nursing, um, I, I will say that the guidance, uh, uh, discourages that, because there's false positives and false negatives that tend to result, um, but we can certainly re- revisit it, and frankly, uh, if that was a feature that, uh, you know, in our conversation with the unions, and that they said they, they really want it, that would, you know, be something we would consider.
Okay, but usually, there's usually not false positives on temperature, um, versus COVID, you know, and I just think it might, might save a problem down the road. The one other question is, you, uh, when you have the, the orientations, that's gonna be what, twenty percent students at each time?
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay.
So, if you had a building of a hundred, twenty students would show, uh, each, uh, on, on, each one of five days.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, you're muted. He said, Donna, you-
Oh, he did? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no problem. Um, Dr. Totwiler, um, there's just a few questions that I have. One is, um, who will be the available staff when, you know, we've given them devices and they're hooked to the internet? Is, is it designated staff that will help these students or families, eh, when there's a problem with the device?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, so that's an area that, uh, we, even to this day, are woefully understaffed, uh, tech support. Uh, Kevin can keep me honest, I believe we have seven, uh, total, uh, tech support folks for, you know, sixteen thousand, seven hundred, uh, students and, you know, thirteen hundred.
Okay, yeah, it's on.
Okay.
And so, so that is an area that, that, you know, again, when we get more clarity on, um, you know, on our budget, uh, picture, uh, that's something that we're gonna wanna try to, uh, want, want to, want to address.
Okay.
Right now, I'm, we're, we're doing our level best, making some shifts within the organization to, uh, create supports for families, but there are some things that can be done, uh, without there necessarily being a live person. For example, um, we have conversations about and are planning to develop just short videos that help people troubleshoot, whether it's, uh, getting access to Schoology, or, you know, something, uh, with the computer. Uh, there are simple tutorials that might help families quickly and easily address a lot of problems without necessarily needing to speak to a live person. But, but rest assured, I, I mean, we are, we are, uh, we've increased exponentially the number of devices in the di- in the district, both on for staff and for students, uh, we're gonna need more support there.
Okay, I guess we need a geek squad.
Yes.
Okay, um, the other thing is, um, I, I know the reason you're bringing the special ed kids back, eh, there, that makes a lot of sense, but the ones that are medically involved, are you gonna ask for, you know, a doctor's note, a clearance for them to come back, or anything like that? You know, that would be my only concern of some of them that are medically involved.
Yeah, so if you, if you, uh, we, we've already been in touch with a number of those families, particularly in our teams program, but keep in mind that there are, we have nurse, dedicated nurses for those programs, um, to be additional layer of support. Uh, but we've already reached out to a number of those families, uh, to gauge, uh, where they were around coming back, uh, and they're working closely with them. I think the first point of contact is with, uh, mom or dad to see, you know, about their level of comfort, uh, and here's the level of comfort, uh, in some cases, yeah, I think it would be appropriate for, uh, their, their, their physician to say whether it's safe or not.
Okay, the other thing on the additional supports, is, is that OTPT and speech? You have one of those, um, one of the papers that we flipped through, it says additional supports.
You'll have to-
I know it was like after school, it looked like it was some after school, but where is OTPT and speech in all of this?
Right, so, um, you know, if you're talking about the, the, uh, three days per week, the, the learning, uh, supports, um, you know, part of the-
No, no, I was looking at something else, I, I think it might've said after school even, I should've got that ready there.
Are you talking about the schedule, Donna?
Talking about the, uh, not the schedule, it was called, um, it's called additional supports. Okay, um, that one, the, oh, sorry. This one, it says, uh-
Learning support, yeah.
Students with disabilities, English learners and homeless students.
Yeah, that's a learning support, yeah.
So, is that where OTPT and speech?
Um, so, y- y- I think, uh, remember, um, Nicholas asked a question about this, that, that program, the thinking around that is still pretty much in, in beta, uh, format. I didn't necessarily envision, um, that program as being one where those sorts of services happen. Uh, I think for the special ed students who are listed on there, we were thinking more for students who are in inclusion, who would not be, uh, receiving in-person, uh, supports, but may need something additional after school. Uh, so more to come on that, that's still being developed, but I, I, I didn't envision that being a place for those-
If it's in an ed plan, are we gonna provide, if it's in an ed plan for students? OTPT and speech, if it's in their education plan.
I think, uh, deputy- Yeah, good question, uh, uh, Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero wanted to speak to that, I think.
Yeah, I believe, Donna, all of, can you hear me? Yes. Uh, I believe all of the services that are in a student's IEP will be delivered when they're at the school. Um, there may be some scenarios where they will provide some of those just after school, but most of them will happen right during the school day.
Okay, so they begin, the, the other, just one last thing, and that has to do with the tenure- Okay, so they begin. The, the other, just one last thing, and that has to do with attendance. I hope that we are taking good attendance and if, if a student doesn't appear in a day. You know, um. I hope that we're, you know, if the family doesn't contact us. I hope we are contacting the family. So that it doesn't get lost the way we lost him in the spring. You know, I think it's, they, the families need to know this is really important. And, um, you know. Attendance needs to be taken and they need to be on there.
I'll go you on further. Remember, Capola, attendance has to be taken. Uh, it's part of the DESI guidance when you're remote learning. Um, they require that your system have an attendance. Uh, taking mechanism. Uh, it is not like, you know, what we had during, you know, the closure from March to June. You know, there, there are grades, there's accountability, there's attendance, already, um. You know, reestablishing our, um, attendance teams. Um, who perform the same sorts of interventions and outreach. Uh, as they did when we were in person prior to, uh, March the 15th. Uh, so, uh, we're going to be taking that very seriously.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other, other questions? Remember Sadoway?
Uh, so Patrick, um. I, 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 I know, I feel as though we need to vote because you need to present something, uh, to the, um, to DESI. So. This is where you feel most comfortable at this particular point in time and there's still more information to follow. Because we need to negotiate certain things with the union. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um.
Can I rudely interrupt, uh, and say that, um, regardless of the outcome of those. Conversations, the proposal to full remote is. That's going to stick if you vote for it.
Okay, but it's going to stick to what you presented. Or does it, or, or is it just the, are we voting on? Remote learning period or what you've presented to us with regards to all the data and schedules and everything else?
So, um, you know, the, the, the DESI guidance called for us to create three plans. Um, the commissioner made clear that, uh, you, you know, you're going to open in one of those three, uh, modalities. What you're voting on is opening in that modality, not necessarily the specifics of. You know, this schedule, you know, that, uh, you know, in-person support.
This is the living document. You, you, you're going to make edits because you, you're still getting guidance and all that stuff. Okay. That makes sense. I just want a clarification on that because. Uh, I hope it gets, uh, better. Uh, it, it's a great plan, but I, I, it looks as though it's the, um. It's the foundation that, that, that we're going to grow off of.
Um, well, yeah, and you know, what I would say is, uh, A, we just got the guidance for remote learning today. So, so, you know, there, there might be, and I, I, I feel pretty confident that where we are with our thinking. Um, it might be a, a notch or two beyond, uh, foundation, but. Where we are with our thinking is pretty solid. Um, you know, we've been spending the, the last, since June 25th. Um, going in three directions, right, uh, in, in earnest. Now we can go in one direction, all, everybody all in on one direction. It'll, I think we'll move a lot faster. Now that we know this, the communication will just be about. Remote learning and how that's going to work. And how we can support families and how we're going to engage kids and what schedules will look like, so what's.
It's, and that's, that sounds great. I'm, I'm going to make a, a, a motion, um, if no one else has anything, but. I do want to reiterate, Patrick, that I would prefer students learn in a safer school because FECTO Larry. They used to be classical. We left that building because it was old. To say that it's because it can fit a thousand students, that, that makes an ideal, an ideal location. I disagree. I think that Marshall or classical, when you were building with better ventilation. Could still be a better, uh, uh, option for these students to go and learn for six or so hours a day. Just, just my opinion on that.
One, thank you.
Uh, m- mister mayor, make a motion to approve the remote, uh, learning for the upcoming school year?
I have a question, sorry. I have my hand up.
Castellanos, uh, and then there'll be a motion on the floor.
So, just, just before we end, will there be? Additional governance and plan with the community? I know we have the sessions coming up, like. If they're going to go in full after this vote, are we going to develop any? Subunits or in terms of just rolling this out or are we, what, what's the engagement setup looking like?
Yeah, and so, uh, as I explained to the member Sadoway, now we can sort of, uh, you know, focus our efforts on one thing instead of. Uh, two or, or three. Um, I'm, I'm intending to hold sessions like that weekly, uh, for families to. Uh, understand the, you know, how the plans are evolving, to answer their questions via chat. Uh, and then posting those on our website because those, uh, sessions can be recorded. And, and on social media for people to watch. Um, it, there, there's going to be regular communication going forward to get families ready, to get kids ready. So, uh, you, you can expect that.
Thank you.
High expectations, Patrick. High expectations.
That is, that is a core value of the Lind School.
Uh, mister mayor.
Motion's on the floor, member Sadoway. There's a motion to accept the, the plan proposed by, uh, Superintendent Tutwiler for the remote learning this fall.
Second.
Second. The second requires a roll call.
Ms. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola. Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes.
Thank you all and thank you for the hard work that's gone in. To, uh, in trying times to put this together, to the superintendent and to this, the, the team that you're working with. Uh, and to. Um, very good discussion we've had with all the members tonight. Thank you. Um, uh, the school year 2020, 21 calendar. Is connected to this obviously, but that's next on the agenda. Dr. Tutwiler, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I do. Um, I think I'll share my screen here so folks will see what I'm talking about. A thumbs up if you can see that.
We can see it.
All right. Uh, so just quickly, um. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, the commissioner, uh, reduced the typical one hundred and eighty day school year. To a one hundred and seventy day school year, uh, with a requirement. Of ten days of, uh, staff learning, uh, professional development before the first day of instruction. Uh, we met with, along with John Myers. Um, met with, uh, the Lind School Administrators Association. Uh, as well as the Lind Teachers Union, uh, and, uh, agreed on the following. Uh, the first ten days would be, um, excuse me, I'll just, I'll talk you through it. Uh, the thirty first through the third would be, uh, professional development, um. Give, uh, staff some time to let that sink in. It'd be a four-day weekend, return on the eighth. Uh, and engage together, uh, until the fifteenth. Uh, we agreed that, uh, on a sixty forty split. Of, um. Virtual and in-person, meaning, uh, sixty percent, uh, or six days of the ten. Would be, uh, learning virtually and, uh, four would be in-person. That way. Um, there would be an opportunity to understand, uh, some of the health and safety features in the event that we transition. Uh, to, to hybrid. Uh, and much of our, our professional development that's being developed. Um, can be facilitated virtually, uh, so that, that worked well. Uh, we would start the school year in green on the sixteenth. Uh, we typically, uh, have, uh, election day as a professional development day. Uh, so November third would be professional development. Uh, there'd be no classes on that day. Uh, all of the red boxes represent holidays or vacation. You can see again that there's a professional development day on January fourth. Uh, by contract, uh, staff work. A hundred and eighty days and then there's two additional days for professional development. We believe. Pretty strongly and deeply that, um. We were going to take those ten days that the commissioner gave districts for learning, but that we still needed those. Additional two days. There's significant professional development going on and I think staff. Uh, would appreciate those opportunities to collaborate. Uh, and to sort of breathe a moment and let stuff sink in. Uh, and then, um, we would conclude the year on June sixteenth. Uh, the commissioner did make clear. Um. This is not my promise, but this is what the commissioner said. Uh, that there essentially would be no snow days, uh. Or barring any, uh, unforeseen, um, situations. Uh, what you see here would be the calendar for the year because. We now have the ability in the event of inclement weather, um, to teach remotely. Um, so, uh, we would start on September sixteenth and end. Uh, presumably on, uh, June sixteenth.
Questions from, uh, members? Member Sadoway.
Um, uh, before I brought the motion forward, Patrick, I just had a, a, a question. So, um. You know, with, with weather sometimes comes power outages, which could, uh, definitely hinder the ability to. Do remote learning. So, uh, I, I'm going to keep, uh, the, uh, the, uh, DESI, uh, chairperson to his word. So, uh, let's hope that that doesn't happen, but there, there could be things that, uh. Could impact the ability for technology to work. Um, but, um, what we're doing is you've already got approval from the, the unions that you needed. So we're approving it on our side. Okay, I make a motion.
Uh, I think member Gaetley had a questions and then we'll go to a motion. Member Gaetley.
Well, I just wanted to tell, um, Mr. Sadoway that, um. There's also makeup work that you can do if you have a power outage and it's very easy to do. The rest is sure it will work.
Thank you, Lorraine. Uh. Make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the, uh, school, uh, year calendar for 2021?
A second? We have a second. We need a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, there were no votes taken on the, uh, personnel subcommittee that's been put off to another day. Uh, I don't think we're required, I don't think we're required to take, yes, member Ford.
Uh, can I say something on the, um, the subcommittee tonight? And Mr. Myers, please interrupt and stop me if I'm out of line in any way. But I think we, we, I, we went to a great effort to hire a superintendent. And the understanding is he builds a team. Uh, we, we, we got a great superintendent. But his, we, our position is we're supposed to support the efforts of the superintendent. And he puts together the team that they, he thinks will do the best job to get it done. And we have a thing called the superintendent evaluation where if he doesn't do a good job. We evaluate him poorly. And I, I just think we're doing, sometimes we're doing the wrong thing. By stopping him from hiring someone he thinks he needs. And if it's a vital position, then it's our fault that the job isn't getting done. Mr. Myers, am I right?
John Myers has a question to you. May have lost, John. Other discussion, John, uh, John, member Ford, other discussion related to that, I think your points. Um. You, you, you made your point clear. Is there other discussion? Is there other? Um. Other discussion on this issue?
If I can just respond.
Member Sadoway?
Uh, even the superintendent, um, and, and Eva, um, agreed that this needs to be, uh, drafted, uh. Slightly, uh, different and presented to us at a later time. There were concerns that were brought by members of the school committee and I think that's important. And the fact that we brought up another position that had these exact things that, uh, they're trying to create in this new position. That needs to be redrafted as well. So there are issues with the posting and that's why I didn't move forward. So I, I appreciate your, your input and, and we definitely give Patrick. Um, uh, we've helped, we've allowed him to build the, the team that he has today. So. I, I understand your concerns, but, uh, it went through the committee. It's tabled until it's corrected and, 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 and improved to better articulate what he's trying to do. And then, uh, we, we move forward at that particular point in time. So. I, I appreciate your, your input, but I, I, I don't think that we need to be scolded. Uh, for, for doing what we, we're, we've been, uh, placing these positions to do.
Wasn't the case of scolding, it was a case of bringing up what I, what I think is proper procedure.
Other discussion? Um, so with, with that, the, I don't know, superintendent, you've given us a lot. Uh, so I don't know if there's any more.
You don't want to hear more?
Information you need to leave with us. I just.
No, I, I, I'll just say. Let folks, uh, get some rest. Um. Uh, this morning I had the, uh. Incredible, uh, occasion to join Principal Karakides. Deputy Superintendent, uh, Ruggiero was there as well. Um, TAC, uh, was awarded for the second year in a row. As a model of excellence school from TACLO, uh, Skills USA, uh, organization and, um. You, you know, for, for one of our schools to be recognized nationally. Uh, it's just something that I, I just wanted to put out there and salute, uh, the team at Lind Tech. Um, the advisors for that program, uh, and of course, uh, the incredible students that. Uh, continue to amaze us in, in, in every way. Uh, I just wanted to share that and then, then we can. That'll be all.
I, I, well, I, I'm, I am be remiss if I didn't hit two quick points, uh. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, uh, Dr. Tutwiler and I were also on a, um. Worked on a video this morning to identify that every student in the, in the city is eligible for, um. Uh, there's, uh, EBT cards that were for every student in the, in the school system to, uh. Because of the COVID nineteen and, and the food insecurity that we're facing in this community. Eighty percent of the students or families have activated those cards, but there's still nineteen hundred cards that were not activated. Which total about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. Um, each, each card is worth up to four hundred dollars, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So not only do the families have an opportunity to get food that, uh, during this time of, uh, food insecurity in our city. But it also is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that can be spent in the community and grocery stores and bodegas and other. Places in the community. So if, if people are listening, please spread the word. I know there's a lot of people that have been on this, um, uh, watching this meeting tonight, so that's an important thing. We will also be continuing to get that information out. And hopefully shared in, in a number of languages so we ensure that everyone, that every single student was eligible for that in our city.
Um. When are the cards shut off? Uh, isn't.
Uh, I think there's a timeline this year, you know, it could be later this year, so it's for this year. Uh, so it's important that we get that information out. Uh, and we can share, um, on our website or even we can put it out, maybe Dr. Tutwiler on this. We can put the information to make it available on the schools. There's, there is, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I don't have the information in front of me, but there is a timeline, but then, the, they are available, they can be activated. And we want to make sure everyone can take advantage of that. Uh, and in addition, um. There's been, um. Different, uh, information that continues to get, uh, disseminated related to the census. Uh, now that it looks like, um, in Washington or the administration is pulling back the timeline and then expanded. Uh, and how important it is for us in the city of Lynn. For the dollars it means, for the, um, representation. So anybody that's listening that hasn't. Completed the census or you can spread the word, we can all do it. I just reiterated, I have the pin on to, I had the pin on earlier today. Um, on the census and it's so important to our community. So. There is changes being made and we need to make sure that that gets done as soon as possible. So I just wanted to make those. Uh, in this forum, give a chance to, uh, because it impacts the dollars we get in that community and obviously our ability to educate our children in the. In, uh, in the city of Lynn. So. It's, it's the census and getting a chance to make sure that those nineteen hundred. Cards that are sitting around, uh, somewhere or people have not gotten them and, and we can work with them to get the cards if they didn't. Get them, uh, and then ensure that they can get access to those dollars and, and to buy food and put some food on the table. So. Um, those are two points I just wanted to make before we, we close tonight. Again, thank, thank you. Again, thank you, everyone. I know these are tough decisions, and the impact is going to be a real challenge for all of us, but we'll work together, as Superintendent Tutwiler said, through this as a community. With that, I'm open to a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second, let's do it, we will do a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you all and good night.
Good night.